Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October, no, it's November. Pence, meeting on the Village of Ramona Planning Board. For purposes of the minutes, I will just note who's in attendance with us. We have planning board members, Richard, Ellen Styler, Cindy Goldstein and myself, Billy Inspector Frank Tavolachi, Teresa. Is it Baker or Backner?
Baker.
Ashley Lyne from AKRF, our consulting planner, Jason Mentor, also from AKRF, Brittany O'Neal, our land use board secretary, John Keller, our consulting engineer, and Susan Oakley are consulting landscape architect. First item on the agenda is the discussion of the minutes and approval, possible approval of the minutes from our last meeting, October 27, 2021. Does anyone have any comments, concerns, questions?
I think Ms. Sheridan's name is misspelled. I think there's an extra E in Beverly. It's L E Y unless I'm incorrect.
It's F E Y.
It's L E Y?
It's L E Y.
Okay, so that's, that's one suggestion. The other thing I think was missing was at the end of that discussion, the chair promised a memo summarizing our comments that we did send and we said we would send, so. That was all that I had.
Okay, so at the end of that discussion, then we should say the planning board will send summary of comments to the tree committee.
Right.
I had one comment under the tree law discussion. The first bullet under my name, on the first part, it says the law should be made available online. I think the reference was the reference materials mentioned in the law should be available online. The law is online. So it should, there should be just a change there to add the reference materials mentioned in the law should be online. And then Susan amplified that and mentioned it again in her comments about the ANSI standard being available online for public access. Other than that, I don't have any, anybody else in any comments? Somebody's cat's walking behind me. I close the door. I don't let the dogs in. Okay, all right. So then do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
A second. Okay, Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, this brings us to our first application of the evening. 1205 West Boston Post Road, which is better known in the community as McDonald's. They're proposing interior and exterior renovations and it requires site plan approval from, from the planning board. So tonight, they were here once before in September, I believe, and we scheduled a public hearing for tonight. And we'll invite the applicant to present to us and remind us the project. And then we have some comments from our consultants and then we'll open the public hearing. And if there's any member of the public who wants to speak, you'll be able to speak at that time. This is really the first, even though they've been here before, this is the real first meeting where the board is diving into this. So this is the beginning of the process. So we'll get it started. Okay. So are you here to speak for the applicant?
Yes. Hi, Gary Chafazeta with the Law from Harris Beach. Here should be Alex Lemay too, from our engineer, Bowler Engineering. I don't know if we can let him in also.
I just promoted him.
Oh, thank you, Ashley. Appreciate it. There's Alex. So this is a modernization of the existing McDonald's facility at 1205 West Boston Post Road. We can, we walked you through the project last month, I believe it was in October. We can walk you through the project again for the board and for the public. And then we'll hear to answer any questions you may have, or for the public, we'd gladly answer any questions also. If I could turn it over to Alex to present what we're doing and we'll begin.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I just did pull up my screen with the colorized version of the site plan, just for everyone to see. So I'll be, I'll go through this, you know, pretty quickly as we presented the application, the last hearing, but the board is aware. It's an existing McDonald's building with drive-through and associated parking areas. I have the colorized site plan exhibit up on the screen here. It's prepared by my office, Bowler, and it was dated October 13th, 2021. The site situated in the commercial C1 zone. There's an existing 4,631 square foot building, proposed interior and exterior renovations. Number of seats for the building is remaining at 91 seats. Site improvements do include ADA upgrades for parking and pedestrian access to the building. And those improvements are on the west side of the building or the non-drive-through side of the building. We're proposing full asphalt paving in the small area near the ADA parking and concrete for the ADA parking spaces. Existing 57 parking spaces onsite, which are being reduced to 56 parking spaces and the loss in the one space is due for the restripping of the ADA spaces on the west side of the building. In terms of the parking spaces, 56 does meet the requirements for restaurant use. The requirement is one space, one space per three seats plus one employee on max shift, and we calculated that to be 37 spaces required. The existing, the existing drive-through for the McDonald's is a single order point drive-through and that will remain. The existing menu board, pre-browsed board and the clearance bar will be replaced in the same location with the current menu board equipment. If you've seen them, if you've driven into a recently renovated McDonald's, just see that the menu boards, they're sort of like TV screens. The equipment for the menu boards and the speakers has the ability to change brightness or change volume level based on ambient lighting or ambient sound, you know, as applicable. So if you're driving through the drive-through at night and the ambient lighting is a little bit dimmer, the the menu board will not be, you know, abrasively bright, has to shine, you know, beyond what's, you know, the ambient lighting is. From a, from a signage perspective, we are proposing to replace the existing 65 square foot McDonald's building sign. It's on the front of the building with a new McDonald's word side. That's about half the size. It's 32.83 square feet. Sign will be on the front facade facing West Boston Post Road on this side where the little A marker is. And just from a drive-through perspective, there's three totals, there's three total signs in the existing condition and in the proposed condition. The existing overall square footage of the signs is 57 square feet. And in the proposed condition, it's 39.52 square feet. So there's a reduction in the overall signage for the drive-through as well. Relative to the landscaping, just because I know that there was a comment from the planner when we were here last month. We are, we were proposing to maintain the existing landscaping, however, we agreed last, at the last hearing that we could certainly add a few street trees along the frontage there to satisfy the comment from the planner. And that's, that's about all I've got in terms of just presenting the application. I know I kept it kind of quick and brief, but if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to take those.
Could you just slide your screen a little bit so the other way, so I can see the egress to Old Post Road? Okay, so yeah. What does reputed owner Ken or M. And other, I'm just wondering what, what those notations are. Yeah, right in there. What, what does that mean?
Yeah, and there's maybe you could speak to this a little bit from, but from what I understand, there's, this was previously the location of Old Boston Post Road or used to cut through, and I think it would previously been relocated with the way the entrance works from back to Boston Post Road in the single line intersection here. So in terms of ownership of the property, I do believe McDonald's does own it, but it had formerly been dedicated. But I'm not 100% sure on the history of all of the, I don't know if it was a paper street or it was an actual street that was changed years ago.
That's right, Alex. That's what the history was, but it is the McDonald's property and owned by McDonald's. So that's why it's part of the plan and is part of the existing conditions and that will stay the same. Also, none of that is changing in terms of ingress and egress as it exists today.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have, I have a question just with regards to this particular graphic. First of all, you know, I don't remember seeing a colored version of this in the packet that was, especially with the photograph overlay in the packet that was submitted to the planning board. So we, if you're going to reference this and use this as part of your application, it has to be submitted to us and become part of the record. So I have a black and white one that's similar, but not quite exactly the same.
I can share that. That is probably what I did present last time. I can bring that up.
Okay, well, it doesn't matter. You can use that one. In fact, that one's better because it shows the street. I want to, because there's so many lines on all of these and so many notations and so many different references on this particular document. Could you just walk through? Obviously, the, the drive-through is the yellow lines that come in off of the post road. And next is the driveway coming in and coming around. So somebody's coming in just to drive and go to the parking lot to walk into the building. They're going to drive on the outer portion and park and walk into the building. Somebody's coming into the drive-through, which seems to be very popular, and that's where the traffic backs up now terribly onto the post road in all directions. Because everybody wants to go to McDonald's. So where is the actual menu board? Where do they place the order? And then where do they pick up the order?
Sure. So the menu board, the actual menu board where they place their order is located right here on the backside of the building where it's notated with the letter C. So the, the menu board is, it'll be a digital screen. It has integrated into it a speaker as well. So they place their order at that one menu board there. There is also the, they also have a pre-browsed board before the primary menu board. So if someone is, you know, waiting in line to place the order, there's a limited sample of, you know, menu items there for them to kind of browse and think about what they want for their order.
Okay.
Once they place their order, they do pull around to the non-drive-through side on the east side of the building. And they will pay at this course window here, it's about right at the edge where the building kind of butts in. And then they will pick up at the next, at the pickup window with, you can see the outline of the canopy here.
Okay, and then they continue on and drive out the way they drive out now?
Correct. Yeah, the, the way the actual flow of the drive-through works, that all stays the same. That's not changing. The real improvement, quote unquote, is the switch of the menu board equipment in the exact same location. And, you know, restripping the ADA accessible parking spaces and a little bit of change in the grades there to make that ADA compliant to access the building.
So in other words, the capacity for how many cars that you can accommodate before the customers place their orders is the same as it is now.
Correct.
Expect that the new fancier menu board with the speaker there will improve that process and the throughput would be faster.
So for the queuing, the, the menu boards do help with that 100%. That is, they do help with the efficiency. For this specific McDonald's, the interior renovations that they will be performing for the building, that is going to be what helps more with the efficiency of the processing the orders. They can streamline their kitchen with the, with the kind of the, the way the food is processed and, and delivered to the people at the windows. And that is the biggest driver in this condition. That's the biggest driver for the uptick in the efficiency of processing through the drive-through.
So has somebody run some numbers to give us some idea of how much faster cars will be able to move through the drive-through based on changes that can be made inside?
I can certainly request that from McDonald's. In this situation with the interior improvements, from what I understand, it's about 20% where you see a more, where you see a better uptick in the efficiency is when you have, you know, additional menu boards, where you have like a tandem layout where they can order at two different points, or if you have the, I don't know if you've seen the, the side-by-side, you know, the dual lane where they have two lanes, one next to the other, and they can alternate taking orders from either menu board. Those, those layouts do have a higher increase in the efficiency. But we can, I can ask McDonald's and get some hard numbers for you if they have that, based on research across the country.
Okay, that would be great. Okay, also, when you were here last time, one of the questions we had with the exterior renovations was what was the new facade going to look like? And someone, I don't remember who pulled up a picture of McDonald's, I believe on North Avenue up near the college in New Rochelle.
Yeah.
That too, then, we need a rendering of what this facade will look like and what this, the sign on the new facade. And if it's going to be the same exact as the one in New Rochelle, that should be submitted as part of the record as well.
For the series, yeah, sure. I believe, because we are going, we do intend to appear in front of the architecture review board. I believe their meeting is next Thursday, and I think we did send into them a colorized elevation plan of the building, which we could certainly submit to this board as well for review.
That would be great.
I, I think we kind of all, we, we need everything if, if we will.
Okay, also, I think there's bike parking in the front where the handicap spaces are now going. So where's the bike parking getting moved? Where's the bike parking going to be?
I did not propose any change to location of any bike parking. So I, I don't, it doesn't show up on the site plan here, but wherever that is in the existing condition, the intent would be that that remains.
All right. I checked that and figure out where, where, where it is and whether it's moving and put it on the plan.
Let me, can I go back to the, sort of the, I guess it's related to the congestion issue during peak hours. So after someone's driven through and they've paid, and let's say the order isn't ready to be picked up. It looks like there's some designated parking spaces that then folks could bring the food out to somebody who's then waiting in a car. So they don't hold up, you know, other customers behind them. Can you explain where those spaces are, how they work? When, when they're implemented, when people are directed to go wait there rather than just sit on the line and watch traffic backup?
Sure. Typically, McDonald's will implement what they call their pull-forward spaces. And those spaces are, in the event that the order, you know, isn't ready or is not being processed fast enough, they allow the, the vehicle to pull out of the drive-through and go to those designated spaces in order to wait for their food to be brought to them. So they don't, you know, hold up or congest the queuing line. I believe where McDonald's has them currently onsite is in these two parking stalls here. So if someone pulls out, they'll drive around here and then we pull into these two parking stalls, kind of in the center parking aisle. Those are movable, so they can change the location of that pretty easily. But they, based on their operations, that they found that these spaces are the best ones for that.
And, and how often is that implemented? Somebody's watching and they see everything's backing up and they start then telling customers to pull aside?
It really is only if the order is not ready. So after they pay, when they go to the pickup window, if their order's not, you know, ready to be delivered to them, I would say within 30 seconds or so, they would ask that they, you know, go to those pull-forward spaces. It's usually for bigger orders that take a little more time to prepare. But that's typically when they ask those spaces to be utilized.
Okay, so it's, it's more because of a slowdown inside the building as opposed to traffic backing up outside the building?
Correct.
Okay.
Any, does any other member of the planning board have any questions, comments?
I have a comment and a question that you can.
Oh, Susan, on the agenda, we were going to have him speak after, the consultancy, after the planning board members. But go ahead.
I can wait.
No, 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 you can go ahead.
I was just saying they, that the applicant mentioned street trees. So does the board want to request a separate landscape plan that shows the existing, what the existing plant material that will remain and the additional street trees, or are you okay with just adding that to the site plan?
Well, part of the, part of the requirements for a site plan application are, is a landscape plan showing the existing landscaping and how it will change. So it would be nice to get that information as well. There are some things that are required for a site plan application that don't apply to this application, but that's not one of them. So thank you. Yes, and thank you, McDonald's for, for considering putting the street trees there, anything to improve the appearance of the site and the, and adding any trees where we can is important to the village. Okay, we, we got one comment. This is a good lead-in, then if nobody else has any questions to our consultants. I don't know, Ashley AKRF, do you have anything to add that you want to point out with regards to this application before we move to our consulting engineer?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. So John, we do have a memo from you from last month with regards to some open questions. I don't think we have anything new from the applicant in response to that memo.
So I haven't, I haven't received any updated plans.
But so there are some open issues with regards to the Keller Sessions memo of October 8th.
Alex, do we have that?
I don't recall seeing it. I'm just checking.
Yeah, this is the one.
Oh, okay. We unfortunately had a little bit of gap in personnel here at the village, but we have a new. You all have met Brittany O'Neal, our new land, uh, land use secretary. So Brittany, could you make sure that the applicant gets a copy of this, of this October 8th memo, please?
Yeah, hello.
Okay, so that's, that's still outstanding. And John, did you see the email from one of the, from one of the members of the public with regards to the stormwater runoff that flows down onto Old Boston Post Road?
Yes, yes, I saw that memo.
Okay.
There seems to be a distinct low point in Old Boston Post Road. In the vicinity, you can actually see through Google Maps where the water, where the water collects at that low, low point. And where it actually enters the the condominium property under the fence. You can actually see the washout, the water going through under the fence. Now, where the water's coming from, I'm not sure. It could be, it could be a, you know, you just had such an intense rainfall that the system can't handle it. And it's flowing down the road instead of in the pipe system at that point.
Okay, well, as long as we're, you know, we're aware of it and you noted it, I mean, the source of the water may not be in time. In fact, the, the writer of this email says he doesn't think it's all from McDonald's.
Yeah, no, it doesn't appear to be. It was on the McDonald's site and there are, are, I guess that's the northeast parking lot. There are two catch basins in that parking lot at the low point. One of them you can see on the screen where Alex is pointing out what his cursor, and there's another by Boston Post Road. It appears that the the, the basin that Alex just highlighted on his drainage plan shows an eight-inch pipe, pipe back under the building and towards the the catch basin further to the south. The basin in the parking lot by the, by Boston Post Road has an 18-inch pipe connecting into the existing state drainage system. So if there was any basin backing up on that side, it's probably due to the eight-inch pipe in the middle of the parking lot.
Okay.
I would imagine that backup in the wintertime could freeze and be a hazard?
Well, if it was a significant flow, I, I believe it'll, there's no topography on this plan, but I use the the Westchester County GIS mapping to look at the topography of the area. And it appears that if that basin backed up, it would most likely flow to the basin by Boston Post Road prior to overtopping the entrance driveway by an old Boston Post Road.
Yeah, the, the site does, it would drain that way in the existing condition and we're not changing anything there. So it, you know, if that one drain did back up, and I'm not aware from the operator's perspective of any kind of, you know, localized flooding during rain events from that perspective, but yeah, the, the topography does slope towards that, that other drain near Boston Post Road.
I believe so, but can you confirm that, Alex?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and also, Alex, the, the site plan application require, require a site plan with the topography to be submitted as well.
So that was submitted. There is a grading plan. There is a grading plan included with the site plans. It might cut off the grading on the side of the site, just because that, we're not doing any improvements there. But I believe the, the survey of the site, the site, the land survey of the site that shows all the topography was also submitted with the package.
Okay, I was looking at the drainage plan, I guess. Well, so we'll take a look at that.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Just double check that we have everything that we need. Okay, John, anything else? Now we'll get you the memo. All right. Any, any other member of the planning board, any comments?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify one thing. So the applicant had mentioned something about a double driveway that mitigates some of the backup. Is, is that going to be implemented here? Is there any change in the traffic flow or?
No.
Will it be the same?
It will be the same. The McDonald's does utilize like two dual-lane drive-throughs for some of these renovations. You know, if they have the space that permits, or in some situations, they'll tear down an existing building and resituate it on the lot to be, you know, to provide better traffic circulation and flow. Unfortunately, that wasn't, that was something we did explore with the village. We ran to a little bit of a zoning snafu from that perspective when we wanted to go with that option. So we, in working with the village over the last few years, you know, we decided to peel, peel that back and do a a building renovation, interior and exterior, and to update the equipment for the existing drive-through, just to be more, more standard and modern with the, the current technology.
Okay, so there's no specific changes that would affect the traffic flow?
The only thing I could say, which is, I had mentioned earlier, was, is this that would be, and I have to get the numbers if there is any, you know, data from McDonald's. But with the, with the renovations on the inside of the building and, you know, being able to process some of these orders a little bit faster, traffic flow remains the same from a circulation standpoint, but the hope is that there's a little bit of increase in efficiency for processing cars through the drive-through.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to this portion of these proceedings where we can open the public hearing to see if there are any members of the public who would like to speak. So I need a motion then to open the public hearing.
So moved.
And a second. Okay, Ellen? You're muted.
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so if there are any members of the public who would like to speak, please raise your hand to be acknowledged and promoted to panelist. To be acknowledged and promoted to panelists.
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. The email that we did receive with the public comments prior to the meeting, was that shared with the applicant? Brittany, was that forwarded to the applicant?
I forwarded it to the attorney today.
Okay, all right. So that's the only comment we have at this point in time.
We did receive that. Thank you, Ashley.
Okay, and does anybody else have any questions? I think that we covered a lot of ground here tonight in a very short period of time. We're very efficient. You all, everybody was ready. Yay. Okay, so then we need to adjourn the public hearing to, let's see. We're doing things the right way these days. So we adjourn to a date certain. So Darius, given all the different things that we've kinda asked you, our next meeting is the eighth of December. And then we have a meeting on the twenty-second of December, and then we go into next year. Do you think you might be able to get all this back sometime in December so we can schedule you, you know, adjourn the public hearing to a date certain in December, or do you wanna wait?
Definitely for December. Is there a deadline for the December eighth meeting to get you the documents?
Two weeks before the meeting.
So that would be the twenty-fourth, the day before Thanksgiving. Alex, does that work, you think?
Yep, yeah, we can do that. I mean, all the plans are done. It would just be maybe giving you guys a, a, a short letter or a memo to address some of the questions that came up here tonight. I'll do my research to see what information I can glean from McDonald's in terms of efficiency for the drive-through. And we can certainly, if you, if you need us to update the plan to show a, a bike rack, I think, you know, we could do that as part of any sort of conditions of it. If we got to an approval, we could do that part of the conditions there, but I believe that the bike rack does look like it's along Boston Post Road and it wouldn't be changing. We would leave it in the, where it is existing, but I think if we can get any of this information, all this into, you know, right around Thanksgiving to hit the, the deadline for the December eighth hearing.
Okay.
John, if we can just get John's memo too, that'll help. I don't know if it's overly you know, detailed, but you know, we, we, we should get everything in as soon as possible and as soon as we see it.
Okay. So then I need a motion to adjourn the public hearing until the meeting on December eighth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
A second. Richard?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate the questions and comments.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Site plan application for a swimming pool at eight, eight, six oriented avenue. Okay, is someone here for the applicant?
I just promoted their engineer.
Okay. Okay. I know that, I, I know Keller Sessions and Rob, you have been going back and forth. We do have an updated memo from John and some updated information from you. Do you wanna just bring us up to date and then ask John to?
Certainly. Again, for the record, Rob Frangian, Frangian Engineering, we listened to what the board had said at prior meetings and what John had requested. And so to quickly go over the site plan, we pulled all the grading back so that really the limit of the the fill on the site isn't here, which keeps this low area and allows for water that's coming off-site to continue to flow on and collect. So we're not changing any drainage patterns. And then all of the proposed patios are now being collected and detained in a new set of coltacs which were, which are being placed next to the existing coltacs that were put in for the, when the house was built. So those were the two really big changes. That we moved the pool equipment to be closer to the, to the pool as opposed to over here. So we've responded and given John everything that he asked for in the, in the report in his memo. So unless you have any further questions, I'm not sure if Rosalia is, been promoted to panelist. She's here in case there's any questions about the planting plan. Or not, that's it.
You are. Okay, does anybody, John, do you wanna respond to about the the engineering and the stormwater?
Yes, the, the applicant has addressed all our comments. I have only one minor comment remaining. And I'm not sure if you saw the most recent memo, Rob. But it involves, it involves just a, an adjustment of the invert in the junk feed box.
Okay.
So that we can isolate one of the coltacs for pre-treatment.
Okay.
We had talked about that. I think it's just a slight adjustment in, in an invert so that the low flows would go to that coltech first.
Okay.
And then get bypassed to the remaining portion of the system.
Sure, we can certainly make changes to that. I mean, it's just like you said, a question of changing inverse on the drawing.
And that was, that was my only remaining comment. I think, I think you did a good job. You addressed all, any of my concerns you, you, you addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm hoping that we can not hold this open and continue to hold this open. We can hopefully close this tonight, because this is certainly a de minimis change that John and I can do offline.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't feel it's something I'd need to, to hold it open. It's a, it's a very minor change to the plans. If the board agrees, it could, it could very well be a condition.
Yeah, I have an updated resolution with that as a condition. Teresa.
Appreciate that.
Okay, all right. Yes, I, I mean, I at least have a question. I think our landscape architect consultant Susan Oakley also has a question with regards to the landscape plan. The, I think the, 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 the question I have, and I don't know if we do we need to promote the someone else up to?
I see Rosalia on here, so.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you, can you see me? I'm here. I'm the landscape designer.
I, I personally want to talk to you about twenty arborvitae that's gonna grow twenty feet high. I understand that you're picking a type of arborvitae that is supposedly deer resistant. We do have a deer problem here in the Maranick. Like most people, I spray my yard with an organic deer spray to prevent the deer browse. But I think something that's gonna be able to grow twenty feet, even if you say people are going to trim it down, down to an, an eight foot hedge, which is more than sufficient to screen for the neighbors. It's just gonna grow to twenty feet and it's totally out of scale with the neighborhood and totally out of scale with the, the neighbors' houses and whatnot. So I have a real issue with regards to including a cultiv, you know, I don't know if it's a cultivar or whatever, I think it's called Green Giant arborvitae that's gonna grow to twenty feet high. It's just not appropriate for the neighborhood. So I would like to go back to Susan's recommendation that I could change to a different arborvitae. I don't know, Susan, if you have any to add to what I'm, my, representing what you said properly. Correct me if I'm wrong. And if any other member of the planning board would like to weigh in on this. Certainly loving your comments. Can we, this is still the engineering plan or is this the?
That's the engineering plan.
I could stop sharing.
I'll pull up the the planting plan. And you see the planting plan here?
Yes.
So this is a picture of arborvitae that it gets shared regularly. I do it all the time and I see it all the time. If you let it go, it will go, go that long, but nobody who lives you know, on a property like this is gonna let something like that go. If you feel more comfortable using the Emerald Green and having them put netting around because Emerald Green, if you don't ever share it, will maybe get about to be like eighteen to twenty feet. I can switch it, but they are gonna have to get into a situation of deer, deer spraying and then maybe some netting in the winter.
What everybody does here, frankly. Does anybody else have any comments about this? You know, are you, are you, from your landscape and design, are you gonna be maintaining this property?
Well, I've been working on this property. I'm sorry, were you talking to me?
No, yes, you say.
Oh, yeah, I worked, I've been working on this property for five or six years since the house was built. So I've, I visit it regularly and I coordinate with the the landscapers on a regular basis. And if they do something that isn't really kind of per the design, we catch it pretty early. So I've been involved for five to six years already. But I do wanna also just back up and let you know that this plan has been revised to include the comments from Terabella. So the spruces were adjusted for the ones that she suggested and I sent a note about the arborvitae and then she sent a follow-up note which made it seem like it was positive and okay. I can switch the arborvitae if that's your preference. But we did get a follow-up note from her when I submitted this new plan. I don't know if you saw that.
It's dated October twenty-fifth? The date on your plan, the, the plan that you have here, what's the date on that?
This plan is dated, oh, I have to zoom. How do I zoom?
So we make sure we have.
It's dated ten seven, I believe.
Okay, so we probably have that.
Yeah, let me just grab my reading glasses, sorry.
Yes, that was the plan that I wrote my follow-up memo in regard to. So but I think Kathy, you had thought more about it and wanted to switch back to the Emerald.
You know, if, if we can put something that, that the, that the hedge that this is gonna create is going to be maintained at a height of, you know, eight to ten feet. I don't know what's appropriate for these plants and, and the the property owner is going to agree to do that as opposed to just letting arborvitae grow. Arborvitae is very tasty to deer. We see them all over the area where, you know, up to deer height, they're, you know, they're eaten down and that gives them a very odd shape. But they make a wonderful hedge and that's why everybody wants to put them in.
Right, and it's a narrow space because we're working with the existing carriage house. So so we need something that's narrow. I mean, I'm okay, to be honest, I can add a note to, to keep it at a certain height. Or I could switch it to Emerald Greens if there's, if, you know, if you're apprehensive about it.
Just the height, you know.
I, I mean, I, I would really prefer the more deer resistant plant material because we certainly don't wanna encourage spraying. And I think to have to then wrap this kind of length of, of, of tree material is, is really onerous every year. So I, I mean, I see the condition in the draft resolution, number two, talk about maintaining it. So it doesn't exceed twenty feet in height. I, I mean, Kathy, would you wanna make it ten or twelve feet in height? I, I mean.
I wanna make it lower than twenty.
Would that solve, would that solve the problem and we can stick with more deer resistant?
Right, it's just the height.
The height.
You know, and, and, you know, I, you know, people, people spray with organic spray. People are not spraying chemicals to keep the deer away. They're spraying.
Oh, I hope, I hope. I'm not convinced.
Anyway, all right, no, that's no, that's not, that's not a problem. We can change that. If we're going to pass the resolution tonight, we can just change it and tonight and have it changed.
You want, do you want the number to be twelve?
No. I'd like the number to be eight to ten myself, but I'm only one person on a board of four. So I propose eight to ten. If anybody wants it higher, they can speak up.
What, is it okay if we say, say shall not exceed ten in height rather than a range?
Okay. Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions or comments or concerns for the applicant? If not, we can move to are we ready to vote on the resolution? As.
As amended.
As amended, right. Everyone saw the new draft this afternoon, which basically just updated the last revised dates of the and the plans and then added that one in, what was it? Inversion for the elevations or something that has to be added to the plans as a condition. That was it. All condition that was in there was removed because it was satisfied.
Excuse me, Brittany, I see two people in the waiting room with their hands up.
This isn't a public hearing.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
This isn't a public hearing. So we're not not entertaining any comments from the public at this point in time. Does anybody have any, anybody, member of the board or consultant have anything to add to this thing? Okay, so I need a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Cindy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ellen? And I vote yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the pool will be in by next season.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, that brings us, we need to, okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is ten forty-three West Boston Post Road, the old bank building that's proposed to be converted to a chopped franchise, which is I guess, not quite fast food or maybe fast food, or we're not classifying it as fast food. Okay. Okay, we've elevated, okay, now this application has been before us a couple of times. We've asked for additional information on various things and thank you for submitting a landscape an updated landscape plan for us. There might be, I think there's still some open issues for our engineer and the engineering memo, but let's focus on what we have that we have today. And I believe there's also some traffic issues. So Mistress Fats, who's here to represent the applicant, if you would like to bring us up to date from your point of view, then we.
Good evening, Chair.
The other things that are going on.
I'm joined by Kristen Wilson. Brittany, if we, I don't know who's running the promotion or promoting of speakers, if we could promote the balance of our team. I know we are Ralph, our, and Brian. It should be Brian Dennis.
Yang will be here again tonight.
Justin's here. It's like, it's like roll call for the Freemussteers. Muscatiers, Musketeers Club. I'm so outdated myself. Okay, I'll stop there. I think we have everybody. Ralph, Brian, okay, great. Justin, Justin, are we waiting for anybody else? Amanda, or anybody? Are we, we're good to go? Wonderful, thumbs up.
Andy. Andy Tom as well.
For the applicant.
We have one more person. Could that person raise their hand and Ashley will?
He, he's been promoted.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, okay, Andrew Tom, great. All right, wonderful. Everybody's on board. Yes, that is correct. We, we've been very busy, Chair, members of the planning board. Last week, we did appear before the zoning board and they did review a draft resolution, which will hopefully be voted upon on November sixteenth. They're having a special meeting to hear other matters, which will include the chop resolution. It's again, as you know, Chair, members of planning board, this has been something that we've been working on for the last year to open a chop here in the village of the Maranick. Most recently, Chair, members of planning board, I was in receipt, or I should say we did obtain a memorandum dated November fifth from Keller Sessions. I know that our team reviewed that and are prepared to address those issues this evening. Also, I'm very pleased to say that on Tuesday, a meeting was held with the New York State. a meeting was held with the New York State Department of Trans, Transportation with members of AKRF as well as a member of planning board. I believe Cindy Goldstein was very much present and participating in that meeting along with our consultant. So really, the heavy lifting this evening lays with our team. So I'm immediately going to defer to them to address both the memo that was prepared by Keller Sessions and also, so Brian could go into depth with regards to the meeting that was held, the virtual meeting that was held on November 9th. So go ahead, team.
Brian Dempsey, I'll, I'll speak first. As Andrew stated, member Goldstein, myself, Ashley and Elaine Do from AKRF meeting with the permit coordinator for the MYSDOT, mainly for member Goldstein to express some of her concerns and the village's concerns in terms of traffic issues with, with the site and with this area. To, to the items that was asked for the DOT to look at, and I had mentioned them to them before, so they are going to look at them, is whether left turns out should be restricted and what could be done regarding pedestrians coming from the school. If any students do not use the crosswalk but just cross mid-block across the post road. So one aspect that came out of it is the state has asked us to do an updated pedestrian count and a pedestrian safety study, which we'll be submitting in about a week to the DOT with a copy going to the village. And so that will be performed. And the DOT is in the process of reviewing the updated traffic study and the other information. And we'll be looking at member Goldstein's comments also. But that will take a couple of weeks. DOT is very busy right now and it's not going to move right away, but we're hoping by the end of the month, we get a response back to the village from the DOT. We did just receive Mr. Keller's memo. Ashley, can I share? Are you controlling or?
You're able to share.
Okay, hopefully you could see. And Ralph will answer the other questions on the, on this memo, since I'm speaking, I figured I'd go first with this. We have prepared a response, it'll, we'll, since we just got the memo, it would be too late, it would have been too late to submit it to Mr. Keller prior to the hearing. So it will be submitted tomorrow. We did look at, he had questions regarding vehicles turning into the spaces, which, so we demonstrate that in this diagram here. Both the angled spaces here and the 90-degree spaces in this, this diagram, this diagram. And we had submitted similar diagrams to the zoning board, this has been reviewed before. The vehicles, all the parking spaces meet village code and they all are appropriately able to be accessed and exited from. And then the last one is showing a vehicle coming around. He had a question about the turn in the back, so these will all be submitted to Mr. Keller. His other question that was traffic and safe plan related was were the parking spaces deep enough? We do, shall demonstrate that the spaces are at village code, they are deep enough. And in addition to the parking space, there is a two-foot overhang along the curve here. If, if it was necessary, which it really isn't necessary. Plus, the aisle width is 14 feet wide, so even if a vehicle was somewhat overhanging, there's still plenty of room, travel room for the vehicle coming into the site to get by. So those, that's the traffic issues that Mr. Keller raised. And Ralph will talk about some of the safe plan issues.
Good evening, Board members, Ralph Paragene, DTS Providence. I'm going to share my screen and briefly go through the, let me see, hold on. We're, sorry, I keep forgetting how to share, I do apologize, here we go. And even though we've been doing this for many months now, it's still. So Mr. Keller had requested that we look into minimizing or balancing the drainage area into the three existing drywells by taking a portion of the pavement, the pavement area and putting it into a separate system. So what we've done is we had this, these two inlets were connected to the existing drywells. We took the one inlet, which is in the parking lot, and which accounts for approximately this much area, just as a, you know, general outline. And we've placed several infiltrators, four-by-four galleys on, in that area. Those galleys accommodate the full runoff for the 25-year storm from that area. In addition, there were several other comments Mr. Keller had made and we're going to, we've addressed fully, I believe. Let me just try to. He requested a and he requested that we place a sump in the drain inlets, which we have in this location. And this is the, the area drain we're using, so we've placed an 18-inch sump there. And then he requested some details of the patio pavers and the permeable landscape wall. The patio pavers, in this case, John, because the separation distance from the bottom of a, of a permeable pavement section is almost on top of that existing drywell, it's really not going to function properly. So we, we are going with a standard paving, standard paver section there. And then there were, the landscape wall only has a maximum differential of approximately 14 to 16 inches. So it's really just, and the chopped team. One, we took off the modular block references and we're going to go with a brick veneer module, brick veneer wall that will better and closer match the finishes of the proposed building. And we'll get those, all of that is, we've summarized in the memo, we just didn't have a chance to get it to you. In the next few days, we'll get it all out. We'll re-summarize the Stallman Management Report, which will address that change that we made in the Stallman system.
Here, Ralph, I'll take a look at it.
Any questions from the board or? Otherwise, I can turn it over Andy Tong and he can address the landscape comment.
I, I have a question, could you, is, is the additional impervious surfaces of 935 square feet, is that all in one place? Or is that in different locations across the site?
It's in different locations across the site. So what we, you know, part of it is the front patio, the front patio will, sorry about that. The front patio, like I said, we really can't divert that area. It'd be very difficult due to its location and we really can't do a permeable pavement here because the existing drywell creates. So this front patio is going directly into the existing system. However, there's several areas here where we are now, we're compensating by taking this entire area of impervious. So there are some minor differences, yes, I agree that there's a little bit of landscape. So it kind of balances throughout the site. I, I can't say it's in one particular location, unfortunately.
Okay, and could you just, you just mentioned some pumps? They, they need, you were talking about.
No, 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 I was talking about the existing drywells, I apologize, existing.
Okay, I think.
Wells, the existing, no, what I said about some in the drain inlets, John requested that we include a sump in the drain inlet. In other words, a certain distance below the out, the invert of the pipe and that area collects sediment. So that's what he's, he's, the intent is to try and trap some sediment in the inlet and catch base and before it gets into the drywells and degrades them in any, you know, it eventually, some is going to get in there, you can never prevent it, I'm just, well, John knows. But the best thing, you know, we try to minimize it to the extent possible.
And who's responsible for cleaning out that sediment and how often does that happen?
That's going to be cleaned by the operations of, you know, Chop will have to make a schedule to do that. On, on average, it's about once a year, they should clean the inlets.
Yeah, there's typically a schedule established with the SWIP. And the, the owner provides an agreement to the village to.
Well, in this case, John, do we have to have an agreement? Because this is a quarter acre property, I didn't know if that applied in this case.
I believe it's all, all drainage systems in the village.
Okay, so that's fine, I mean.
I believe that's how the village regulations specify.
Okay, I'll coordinate that with, or I'll, Frank, you can give me the, any guidance on it, I'm sure.
And, and the site, and the site has three large drywells, which handle the runoff from the site presently. Ralph was trying to present the picture that there was additional capacity in those drywells to handle the additional 900 square feet. And what I did, I asked them, let's not try to assume how those drywells are working or what the perks are. Let's just say additional infiltrators to make up the additional volume to handle that 900 square feet. Even though that 900 square feet doesn't go into those units, it's an add-on to the present system to compensate for. And he was, he was, he, he was good enough to provide that to us.
And I understand.
I mean, we also are proposing that the existing drainage system be cleaned and maintained or, you know, as part of the construction plan, they're going to clean, we're proposing that everything will be cleaned and maintained.
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on the engineering? Before we turn it over and move on to landscaping, I want to go back to traffic. Thank you, everybody, for participating in yesterday's meeting with DOT. Ashley or Cindy, do you have anything that you'd like to add or supplement what we heard from Mr. Dempsey with regards to the meeting yesterday?
Well, I'll just say it was, it was, it was, I think it was very productive. I think, you know, I certainly heard the DOT is backed up and they'll do the best they can to, to get through this. I think some, having some real numbers, since some of these observations and studies were done during COVID, when the high school was not fully operational, to get that updated data will, will, I think, help inform what can be done to frankly protect students from a lot of traffic and prevent drivers from being involved in a life-altering situation. I did, the, the one thing that I did not realize that DOT can do is that, especially with looking at the potential of requiring people exiting the site to only make a right-hand turn, not a left-hand turn. Certainly, other businesses in that general strip of the Boston Post Road do not have that kind of restriction. But it, unless I misunderstood, DOT could, because traffic patterns change, make, go into those businesses and ask them not, you know, and, and enforce no left-hand turns coming out of certain other areas. So they're going to look at the, at, at that corridor, you know, in its entirety. No one's going to be singled out for any kind of punitive treatment. It's not like up to Chop to fix all of the ills, you know, of traffic on the Boston Post Road. But I, I think it, it'll be an important exercise for the village to have DOT look at all of this and then make the best, you know, decisions, since that's their area of jurisdiction here.
And I would just add that we, you know, we offered to the DOT that the Village Planning Board would like to coordinate with them on this review. And we are going to wait to hear their response before the board moves forward.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for doing that. Okay, we can move on then to landscaping. We did receive a, an actual landscaping plan, which was great. And our landscape architect responded to it in a memo dated November 8th. I don't know if the applicant got a copy of that, I'm hoping that he did. But it doesn't matter because you're not finished yet. So why don't we talk a little about landscaping? I personally want to thank you, the applicant, for listening to what we had to say with regards to softening the look and putting trees in where you can in the Boston Post Road, because there is greenery there now, where the patio is going and putting some more greenery around the patio and, and the other areas in the front of the site, I thought it was a really good start. Susan has some comments, but I don't know if you want to present what, what you submitted so that the public can see it as well. And then Susan, if you want to comment on it, and we can go from there, okay?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, my name is Andrew Tong from Divinity Tong Schwolbe. At the time of the drawing, now DTS Providence. And if I may share my screen, I'll bring up the landscape plan. So in preparing this plan, we looked to provide an appropriate setting for the proposed chopped while responding to Ms. Oakley's July 21st, July 2021, rather, memo to the planning board. And in doing so, we have noted, as she did, the two existing maples at the top of the plan that would be preserved, pruned and divined. We have focused our efforts on improving both the streetscape and the appearance of the building from Boston Post Road and to provide a little buffering between the proposed patio and the sidewalk and the roadway. In doing so, we've added some street trees flanking either side of the, of the property and the driveways. Layered planting, both of evergreen and deciduous shrubs, ground cover and perennials along the sidewalk and in front of the patio. We have, there is a little bit of right-of-way adjoining to the sidewalk and we've maintained the grass that's in that right-of-way and extended it into the site to the beds so that there's a smooth transition there. Towards the rear of the site, along the, the bottom boundary with, shared with Equinox, there are some, as you can see in the plan, on the survey, in lighter, lighter colors along the boundary, there are some existing trees whose roots extend into the chopped property. And we've proposed to put a series of groupings of native shrubs interplanted among the roots. Those would be located by our office with the contractors, so as to not disturb those roots and intersperse them where possible. We've also added some planting along the rear of the property, adjoining the existing refuse enclosure, the new walk-in chiller at the back and also in the limited area along the rear property line in front of the new fence that will go along the property line and looking to plant native ground covers in the pockets of soil that we will look for in the rock ledge in that area. We did receive the November memo by Ms. Oakley and believe that we have responded to her earlier comments. We have no objection to relabeling the Armstrong maple that is proposed as the, the street tree.
Since you all have submitted your application, the village of the Maranick has passed a tree law, which is now in effect. And the tree law calls for any application that requires a site plan to prepare a tree preservation plan. I think I got that right, the name of that right, this is brand new. Because you're planning on removing six trees, there's a requirement of replacing them. So since you, you, we still have some more work to be done on this application. I think we, and Teresa, our land use attorney, or can correct me if I'm wrong, but you are subject now to the new tree law. So I think you need to take a look at that and. So I think you need to take a look at that and. See what requirements now applied to you and might have to make some changes to this based on the new law that's in effect here at the village now. I don't know, Andrew, did you get did you see that in the agenda and whatnot?
I have not read the.
Who actually lives here?
The chair, no, I I am. I was not aware that that. Resolution was voted upon.
Yeah, they they passed it last month. So we, you know, we we looked it over. In our last meeting two weeks ago, so I think it was past like about five weeks ago, four or five weeks ago. So you might want to look at the new code. It's like chapter three, six, three, eighteen, I think, in the code, the new tree law. It's completely revamped and there are requirements. If you're taking down trees of certain calipers and whatnot, you have to replace them with other trees.
So Chair, I would have Mr. Tong, obviously, we'll get a we'll get access to that code as public records. We'll we'll get a copy of that.
It's online. Right.
Mr. Tong can review that in detail with Ms. Oakley and whatever needs to be adjusted and tweaked.
I mean, you may have already met the requirements since you're planting new trees, but we need to have that memorialized on.
That's fine. It could be added to Mr. Tong's. Cycle or the plan, landscaping plan. Absolutely.
Susan, do you have any comments that you want to make with regards to where we are right now?
I had suggested the addition of trees in the rear parking area. So I know that the, you know, subsurface drainage may affect. Where trees can go, but that should be considered.
There was a lot of, I mean, again, Mr. Tong can address that, but I believe. From my record, I mean, I've been there quite a bit. There's a lot of rock on the back, so. Again, Andrew, if you want to address that or or explore if there's additional screening and landscaping, I know you made reference to the, in fact, it's funny. The you brought that up because I wanted to make sure with the screening landscaping guidelines, we had your blessing to go forward with that. So I'm glad you brought that up. Because that was one of the questions I had for three section three forty two sixteen C to B two, make sure that we're good to go. But again, Andrew, that's something that you could maybe coordinate with Ms. Oakley and make sure that we maximize landscaping screening. So it's tasteful and it's. It's maintained. It can be maintained.
We will certainly do that and review the new law to see how that applies here.
All right, so we have a little bit of work to do on landscaping. We have some traffic and we have the latest. Plans on the on the engineering on the on the SWIP to to review.
So Chair, I have a question for you and members of planning board. As you know. This has been a very, very prolonged process. No fault of anybody. It's just been a long process. It's been a long haul. On and our hopes and aspirations were to kind of start wrapping and concluding some of these items up. For example. One thing that I am concerned by and I I commend and applaud. The participation of planning board with the client or my applicant. And consulting with the New York State Department of Transportation, especially along that corridor. I have kids that walk up and down that corridor. I walk that corridor. So it is a very important component. However. This could take a long time. No fault of planning board, no fault of our consultants, no fault of engineers, but that could be a timely process. My question is. Any determination made by the NYSDOT? Could that be could our approvals be condition of incorporating that? Because let me just be candid. If. This is something that's going to go and spill into twenty twenty two. We're ready on our end. When I say we, the village planning boards ready, we we've addressed the issues with the site plan, landscaping. All are ducks in a row, boxes checked, but waiting for that. I want to be able to tell my client that we can go forward conditioned upon whatever render whatever determination the New York State DOT makes, we it's incorporated in our resolution. I'm very doubtful and I'm speaking candidly and with authorization of my client. That this thing, again, no fault of planning board, but if this thing spills over into twenty twenty two, I don't think there's going to be a job. I'm I'm speaking candidly and and with much sadness. Because it's been a year process. They're paying rent on an empty building and. You know, so is that something? And again, I don't I don't mean to put Chair and the members on the spot, but. In any event, we wrap up all these other issues. To your satisfaction, to your consultant satisfaction, anything that's determined by the New York State DOT, can we make that condition to approvals?
Good try. I can't give you a certain answer now. I mean, let's just see how things go. We don't have another meeting in November because it's Thanksgiving. And then, of course, then, you know, the holidays always have make everything go slower. You know, I think Mr. Dempsey said he was maybe expecting a response by the end of the month. Let's see if we get a response by the end of the month. We could take it under advisement with our land use attorney and our and our consulting planner. You know, but I can't. I'm not going to give you a.
I mean, in in fact, Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, in the event, let's just I'm going to play. Hypothetical here. I mean, we would like to come back in December, Chair. I mean, we want to be, we need to come back in December. And again, that. Is for us to provide you with whatever Ralph is going to provide and whatever additional information that.
If we can wrap up the other issues, if we can wrap up all the other issues, landscaping and the and the SWIP. And then when you have traffic left, we'll we'll see where we stand.
At that point, and I I again.
This is a dialogue back and forth and, you know, I understand you've been before other boards. You haven't been with us that long.
No, no.
It's just a process, you know.
I'm going to preface that this is no fault of planning whatsoever.
But it's no fault of the applicant, you know.
Absolutely.
Sometimes things happen.
But I I want to just, you know, I I think that in good faith, even even if, and I and I can I appreciate Ms. Goldstein's participation on Tuesday. If there are anything, any carryovers until a DOT run makes a final determination. If that makes a difference of the concerns the board has, we will incorporate that. Until obviously the DOT provides a final determination.
We understand what you're saying.
And and I.
I could just clarify what my comment was earlier. So when we were speaking with the DOT, one of the questions that came up was whether or not the DOT would prohibit left hand turns out of the site. Which is a site plan consideration. So my concern was that if the planning board were to move forward with a site plan that showed. Both movements coming out, that ultimately the site plan wouldn't match what DOT was approving. So I don't think we necessarily need the formal memo from DOT, the the letter saying. No left turns or 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 both movements are okay before the planning board moves forward, but I would like to at least have a phone call or an email. With some indication from DOT as to what direction that they are going before the planning board grants final site plan approval. So that the the site plan that's ultimately approved is consistent with the direction that DOT is going with their approval.
I think that's more than fair. I I we can't just start, you know, give you, okay, cycle and go forth and do when there's this big open issue. You know, this is one of the major concerns with regards to the site. It's right across from the high school. Everybody in that building and and I think Cindy knows she told me the other day how many people are in that building. They all go to lunch at the same time. Everybody comes pouring out. I've been driving on either Palmer or Post Road when that happens. And it's just like ants coming out of an anthill, you know. Everybody's moving in some direction towards something and it's and they're going to cross, not just to go to top, but to go to the other food establishment. Outside of the street as well. So.
Just Kathy, just a quick question. In terms of what the applicant has asked for, the applicant always has the option of asking for a more restrictive. Site plan, one that would would restrict the left hand turns. So that may be something you want to consider doing, Andrew, if that moves things forward. That's just a suggestion.
And Teresa, I appreciate that. And that's something that I would consult and discuss with my team and with Ms. Wilson, who's on our room as well. And and as I said, if that. Meant facilitating this and getting one step closer, Teresa, we're we're all about that. So we'll explore everything and anything. Nothing you're asking for so far, Chair and members of the planning board are unreasonable. Everything you're asking for and making suggestions to. Again, as a member of this community, I I think it's tasteful and it makes sense. It's practical.
Thank you very much.
You know, so that's why I'm sort of I'm now pleading to say, okay, once we get that done, so. We know what we need to do. If there is anything that Mr. Tong, Mr. Dempsey, Ralph, i- i- if there's anything that you want to add before we conclude, I just want to make sure because Chair, we would like to come back. You have two meetings in December. I think you said on the eighth and the twenty second.
Correct. Right.
I mean.
And then we're back again in January.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm in constant contact with DOT, too much for my liking, but. Various other projects also, but I will keep Ashley informed and Ashley and Elaine informed. And when they get, because it goes different departments within the DOT to review, but when we get somewhere. Maybe where we have another Zoom meeting with them.
So just may I ask that we go on?
Andrew, I'm sorry, you asked. John, if you I, you know, when we resubmit, I if you have any minor comments, just call me directly so we can try to hash them out together rather than going through another memo phase. Thank you.
We eventually need the final memo with John sign off.
I understand that. I'm just saying if he has a minor, we can do something over the phone real quick. It would be, you know, to help expedite this.
I will. I'll give you a call.
Chair, can we be placed or? Miss Beckner, could we be placed or Ms. Lee, anybody who wants to answer, could we be placed on the December eighth calendar?
Not unless you submit your information for that meeting by the deadline. We can't place you now if you submit.
I know I know ZBAs now.
No information for us to move forward. You have, I I think we just gave the date to somebody else.
November twenty fourth.
If you get the landscape stuff, the the tree preservation plan, but every, I mean, if you can get the traffic stuff, great, or as much as you have. It's warranted. If you want to assemble the team and have another meeting and not wait, you know, until the end of December. It's up to you. The applicant must incur the cost of having all these people attend a meeting when you don't have everything finalized. But yeah, if you think you're, you know, a hundred percent on everything else and you want to just get that out of the way and then we can see where we are. But you have to have the paperwork in by the twenty fourth or we can't put you on the agenda. Because we all then have a lot of work to do between then and the meeting. Okay. Okay, thank you. It was nice to see you all and. Okay.
All right, I think that wraps up our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
But but I will say this, Chair, tonight's agenda messed with my head because I came in here making a salad, trying to compete with Chop. It did not work out. Then you talk about McDonald's. I want french fries. Then we're talking about pools. I'm like, well, I have too many french fries and I can't go in the pool. So I mean, tonight's agenda really messed with my head, but that's that's okay. Have a good night, everybody. Take care.
All these food things. Okay.
Bye bye.
Thank you.
Just now we can move on. We can make a lot fewer faces on the screen. We can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is five seventy two Van Rand's place. Now, we had originally put this on the agenda because we were ready to declare ourselves lead agency and we had a letter. In time by the deadline from the applicant saying they were going to submit some additional information. With regards to the declaration of lead agency, we just received word recently from the zoning board that they never received the notice of intent. And the applicant never submitted the documents. So we are not going to declare the planning board as lead agency and move forward on the secret process tonight because we don't really have anything to look at and we're going to give the zoning board a little bit more time to get back to us. However, our land use attorney and our planning consultant. Have graciously volunteered to educate the planning board on what the next steps are in the secret process for us because none of us have gone through this before. With the beginning of a of a of an application, some of us went through it at the end of an application, which was quite onerous. But just to describe to us sort of what happens after a declaration of lead agency is made, we'll do this very quickly. We have one more application and one more application to discuss tonight. You know, there's something called a determination of significance and whoever wants to take the lead on this and describe what happens next. Please do, because I think it'll be important for the planning board, the applicant and members of the public to understand this is the very beginning of a process on this application. And it's, you know, there's no decisions that are going to be made for a while and let's all understand what's going to happen next. And while this application is at the planning board, it's also at the zoning board. Because they're asking for, I think it's six or so variances. And at HCZM and we'll be coordinating review or environmental review with the other. Land use boards in the village. And anybody else that needs to get involved, as you just saw with the previous application, the State Department of Transportation is involved. Okay.
So I'll I'll kick it off and then Ashley can fill in with anything that she she would think is also helpful. So practically speaking, when you're making a determination of significance, you're at a fork in the road. And one side of the road is a review that is sort of the typical review that you all do. Where you request information and you review it and you make a determination. That there's not going to be a significant adverse environmental effect. Now, in order to make such a determination, really. All of the environmental issues have to be addressed to the satisfaction of the board upfront and a and a demonstration that. The design of the project has addressed any potential significant environmental effect. The other fork in the road is what's called a positive declaration of environmental significance. And a POSDEC is at heart a determination that the. The likelihood is is that there will be at least one significant adverse environmental effect from the project. Which can't be mitigated through project design. Okay. So this, this is a determination that you're going to require an environmental impact statement. Now, people think of environmental impact statements as big scary things. However, environmental impact statements, particularly under the newest form of the D E C regulations. Are meant to be developed after you accept a scope. And that scope is keyed just to the significant environmental impacts that are at issue. So, for example. If you if you have a project where you have good levels of service with traffic and traffic is really not an issue. Then you wouldn't study traffic exhaustively or potentially even at all. But you may have another issue relative to blasting, relative to. Relative to grading, relative to stormwater that you cannot resolve merely by having a compliant design. So one of the first ones of these that that I got involved with up here. Involved a situation where we were going to have a failing intersection because of a railroad crossing. And there was literally nothing we could do about it. It was it was just a condition that was going to persist. And it was a significant adverse environmental effect. So we had to go through the environmental impact statement process in order to see. If there was some balancing feature to the. if there was some balancing feature to the project that would make the adverse effect okay for the community. So it's really a situation where you can't design around a problem, but you have to address it head-on by looking at alternatives, particularly alternative onsite and off-site options. And where you also need to have mitigation, which is really extra mitigation. It may be off-site mitigation. It's going to be in some sense, a little bit extraordinary. It's not adding a call tech unit. For example, it's not adding landscaping. Okay? Those, those are the things that are very easy to resolve, you know, without an environmental impact statement. Now, I'm not advocating for requiring an environmental impact statement for the, for the, for the, I can't even say it tonight, for the Van Rans place project or any project. But what I thought it would be helpful to do is kind of give you a sense of the types of situations under which you might want to require an environmental impact statement and what you could achieve using it as opposed to trying to address issues that maybe might, may be more difficult to address in the context of a negative declaration. So Ashley, what did I miss?
I guess the one, and this is like seeker two point O, is the, because this is an unlisted action, there is one other tool called a conditioned negative declaration, where it does allow you some flexibility to condition the project on meeting certain mitigation measures. And that's something that is, you know, above what would be a typical negative declaration.
That's a very good point. I forget about those because I hate to do them. The, the other thing I wanted to say before, before we move on is just, the D E C has a wonderful seeker handbook. Alls you have to do is go to their website and type in seeker handbook and it pops right up. You all may have it. There's a brand new one on there. And it specifically devotes like twenty to thirty pages to, do I issue a POSDEC or do I issue a NACDEC? So it's, it's very worthwhile taking a look at.
Okay.
And, and I would just say that at this point in time, the board hasn't received enough information or that, to be able to, to make a determination of significance. There's a lot of outstanding questions. I did speak with the applicant's attorney today. They indicated that they are appearing before the HCZMC next week. And that they do plan on submitting a revised package following that meeting. So that would possibly be on one of your agendas in December or early January.
That meeting was moved to the twenty-third. It was the seventeenth, but it's Harper Colts' meeting on the twenty-third.
Okay. Thank you.
So it, it sounds like there may have been more information submitted to HCZMC that we don't have yet, or?
I'm not sure that they changed the package between what they submitted to the planning board and what they submitted to HCZMC. It didn't sound like they had made any substantive revisions.
Okay. So, and, and maybe.
They want to change the package after they go to.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Okay. Cause I think we, you know, knowing, knowing that any of these applications could have at least some, if not a lot of changes to them. And, but I think we just have to make sure that everybody, every board that's looking at these things gets every other board's information because we all need the same information. So maybe I can ask a question about the coordinated review aspect of this since, so maybe you could describe that for us if, even if we are lead agency at some point. How does the coordinated review differ from maybe what we usually do or what usually happens?
Right. So coordinated review means that you are designating one agency to be lead agency and all of the other boards need to rely on your determination of significance when they make their own findings on the project. So that's why at this point, it's good for this board to be receiving comments from the HCZMC and the zoning board of appeals on their environmental concerns so that this board can make sure that it's looking at those concerns when it's making its determination of significance.
I mean, I think informally, we, we all always listen to other boards. They just carry more weight this time if they, in a coordinated review, they have more standing to, to.
Yes.
We have to give it more weight than we might otherwise, but I think we're always open to hearing from others.
And, and we're open to hearing from other parties. I know the flood committee here in the village has asked to be involved in any reviews and, you know, that everything is always public and they can always comment and, you know, we pay attention to their comments and, you know, so. So, and, and when we get to this point, there will obviously be public comments as well, but we're just not there yet. And we received the comment today that there was nothing attached to the agenda for this meeting and that's because we didn't get anything. So, so, you know, we, we, they warned me for us once before. We did have the original application materials. It's available attached to that agenda, but we don't keep repeating everything because it makes it difficult for everybody then to sort through all the documents. But I think this has been helping for me because I didn't really fully understand what the next steps were. And I'm glad we had this opportunity then to explain it, not only to the planning board members, but also to anybody else who happens to care and is listening. So, or we'll see this on, on, you know, tape on LMCTV, which is still LMCTV, but may change.
Soon to be MC.
Right. They seem to be in a little, in issues going on in LMCTV. But, okay, thank you. Does anybody have any other questions or any comments on how we, you know, we, we'll see what we get and we'll move forward from there and we'll work through the process within the, the structure of the secret law with the expert help of Teresa and Ashley. Okay. Okay. So Van Rand's Place will be on an agenda at a later time for the declaration of lead agency in the beginning of the secret process. Next item on the agenda was one ten slash one fourteen Mount Pleasant Avenue, a subdivision application. The applicant has requested that we table this to a later meeting. They suggested sometime in January. So they'll be on the agenda later in January, which then brings us to the last item on the agenda, one thirty-nine East Prospect Avenue. We all, I think, members of this board, most of us were on the planning board when that was approved. Do we have someone from the applicant here to explain what's going on? They're seeking a, a, an extension of their approvals? Or their site plan approval. So.
I'm promoting their attorney right now.
Okay.
Good evening. This is Daniel Patrick from the Law Firm, Cuddy and Fader. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. As indicated, this, this application was approved last year for the eight dwelling unit department that this board is very familiar with and the village is very familiar with. Currently, the applicant is working to obtain financing for the project. There's been a, a significant in, in the industry recently due to the cost of, you know, changes, the cost of materials. COVID in general, there's just changes in, in circumstances that have, you know, resulted in a trouble getting financing, but there's expected to have financing in the next month or two for this project. At that time, they'll be able to submit for the billing permit application and, you know, begin construction. But since we, since this was approved, the applicant has been able to complete the asbestos abatement. So they are working towards having that building removed, the existing building removed to be able to construct a new building. It's just a matter of, they have been able to pull a billing permit just yet. So we're here looking for the extension of the, the site plan and special permit approvals.
Thank you. Any members of the planning board have any questions or any concerns about this request? No? No? Anybody have a problem with asking Teresa to prepare a resolution approving a request for the next meeting?
Um, Kathy, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If you would like to go ahead with it, it would be fine to just do it by motion to, to extend it subject to the existing resolution for another year until November twelfth, twenty twenty-two. If you want to give them a year, that's fine. If you want to give them six months, that's fine. It's, it's really up to you.
Okay. So we don't need a resolution. We can do it by motion.
You can. Yes.
Okay. Any, any, anybody have any druthers with regards to how much time?
I, I, I see no problem with a year, but.
I don't either.
Sounds, sounds good to me.
Okay. So then I need a motion to approve an extension of the approval for one thirty-nine East Prospect till November twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
So.
Second.
Okay. All right. Ellen?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Can I vote? Yes. Okay. That was.
Thank you very much.
All, all should be.
I knew I had to wait around so long for that.
Happy one. Well, appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody have anything else? This is the end of our, our agenda. It's what time? Eight forty-one. We accomplished a lot tonight. Everybody, everybody for all your help and involvement. And with that, I want to adjourn the mo, adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.